Yeah, her signature thingy. We need, yeah, we'll have to, because I had a question for her, but we'll have to.
Okay, we're recording now, just so you guys are aware.
Have another opinion there. Pour off the pen. My nervous tick was doing this, don't even stick anywhere.
You've filed the tolerances.
What's that?
You've filed the tolerances, Wayne.
Damn right I did. It's probably correct. Slam down here. Oh. Soulful.
Oh, your signatures are good.
Oh, good.
I know you're just...
Holding my breath.
You're in, Travis.
All right. I turned my petition in yesterday.
Did you?
Yep.
How many? I hear you, there's only one other that picked up a petition here in Mercer County.
I, I know one is turned in, and I know there's one other one that's being circulated. So... With mine turned in, and the one turned in, and one that's, I know circulating, there'll be at least three.
Oh, okay.
So... You're condensing today?
Yeah. Sit way down there, make it look like I don't get along with you two. But?
Well, I, I know there's...
Okay, and then Beaver Brinkman, he was gonna come in at nine thirty, right after that air compressor bid opening, because we only got, we only got the one. So I told him to just show up, so then he could be called. He said he only had like ten minutes. And you guys do have a copy of everything he's going over in the little bundle.
Was he on here somewhere else?
Yeah, I have him down at eleven forty-five.
I don't see a problem with that.
Okay. He's gonna be...
He can be here at nine thirty.
I'll just say, like, nine thirty-five.
Gonna say, I see they both, you two both scooched in, so...
Yeah.
We decided Travis only had a little bit of clues today, not a lot.
Right. Nothing like, like, funny.
Nothing like funny.
Although I do, do you have the, I haven't checked the upcoming agenda, do you have the... Every attendant?
It's on the agenda as of...
Did you need a copy?
Because Travis had to refuse himself not to give you two.
Yep.
You will, you will be updated in about one minute.
Or now.
Okay, I'm gonna call the Mercer County Commission Meeting to order. We have the agenda in front of us.
I'll do a pledge allegiance first.
Oh, sorry, yes.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, now the agenda.
Yeah.
All right, um, the ten o'clock Farrington land request, these attorney. We're going to remove that from the agenda. Everybody has been informed, the attorneys and the Farrintons and the Schwabs, that we were going to pull this, because we won't have a quorum for that. So we won't even hear any testimony. Beaver Brinkman, we'll put him down for nine thirty-five, I guess. As per the auditor, they've had that discussion, so that'll be okay. Under other business, um... When, uh, under the request for duplicate warrant, I think that's with the treasurer. We're gonna just add, uh... Or even if it's just another line item, add back bank signatures for the Mercer County Treasurer. She'll come in and let us know what she's asking. Uh, we need, uh, EM. Also authorization of PERS, we need to add that to the HR update.
So authorization for PERS?
Yeah, authorization of PERS. And so that she can, um, contact them about the benefits. And then I have here just a note, I don't know if I do it under my portfolio updates or not, but I have a letter for anyone who wants a North Dakota County official's directory. I have that, um, in my backpack. I'll let you guys look at it, you'll have to probably remind me.
And so North Dakota County...
North Dakota County officials directory, it's called, the twenty-twenty-four.
Yeah, I got one in the mail.
We all got one? Okay.
Carmen, did you get one in the mail?
Yes.
Oh, never mind, we won't even be adding that. Never mind.
Mine came in the mail the other day.
Yep, okay. Anything else?
Um, can we just put, uh, budget down there? It's just general things I wanna talk about, nothing action-wise, but just to be thinking about.
Under other business budget, okay?
What is this bank signature?
See, I already gotta ask, Carmen.
What? That's, we got it.
That, okay.
Yeah, that is where we added with, uh, Dawn's.
That's Dawn, okay.
Yep, so you got it.
Okay, anything else?
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Hearing no further changes, Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Okay, uh, regular and approval of the regular meeting minutes, February twenty-twenty-one, do I have a motion to approve as presented?
I'll move to approve as presented.
Okay, so I wanna clarify, are we, we're first starting with the regular?
Yes.
Regular ones, yep. Yeah, I'll move to approve the regular, uh, meeting minutes from February twenty-first.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Travis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye. And I have a motion to approve the special meeting minutes. Down here.
You wanna do this one?
I'll make a motion to approve these minutes.
You moved, Jamie moved?
Yeah.
Okay, Travis?
I'll second.
Hearing no further discussion, Jamie, how do you vote?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean, aye, motion passed. Okay, now the vouchers. Well, at nine thirty-five, we have, or nine thirty, we have to do that right at nine thirty.
Yeah. Because it's the bill. Yep. I'm, I'm here to assist.
I need a lot of assistance.
No comment.
No comment. Last one?
Mine. Jean just can't read.
Okay. What'd I give her? Two year, one no?
Yeah, that, well, that's why it caught.
There's even a discount for it, so...
Yeah. I did not talk to the weed board about, uh, vouchers. But I have it laying on my...
To-do list?
Yeah. On my to-do list, so...
I know. She hasn't changed the law yet.
I think we've said it.
This visa business card is owner Shannon Bros?
Yeah. We're, we're switching it over to state where it's a county, and it isn't... State has an option for counties, McLean County uses it a number of them, so we're in the process of switching it over, so then Shannon's name's off there. And nobody else's social security number and name, it'll be through the county.
Yes.
It's time.
Is that where we get the option that departments can have a card if stuff needs to be ordered?
Yes, that would give us that option.
That's all part of that?
Yes.
I know we talked about it, but it just hasn't gone anywhere?
Exactly, Shannon Gibson, her name, she could call it in council, I card.
Correct.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, we're on borrowed time on that one.
Well, actually, is it in Shannon's name, or is it in...
So we are in the process of change.
Yeah, we are, it's just a matter now.
Could you win it?
Okay, I don't know if that...
I mean, we've got all the paperwork in place. Because I think you can do something with cards through wax more than just fuel also.
That wax was limited to only, I thought that was only limited to the gas stations, but...
I thought there was another option on their website when I looked. Why don't I just think we need to do some? Had a bunch of, uh, share of stuffs on my queue, I did an EMD course on for a lot of our dispatches.
Okay. I was just looking at the sales tax.
No, I had, I looked at it, but they just did that, uh, February twentieth or something like that.
Why is the Hazen start cheaper than the Beulah Beacon?
Why?
Okay. Unless they did an online subscription versus a newspaper, but I believe they're all the same.
Why is it?
Oh, yeah, this one's online versus, you're right, yep. I just saw one was for Beulah versus Hazen. But online is cheaper, yes.
No postage, no paper. It's gonna defeats the purpose of the paper.
I feel like it's hard to read, like, I don't like reading stuff online, I'd rather read it on paper. I'm not...
Makes me think of a conversation I had last month, and it was... There was people about my age talking about the save icon on computers. And the admin there was like twenty-one, twenty-two, and they're like, "So what's the, the emoji or the thing of the save icon?" And she's like, "I have no idea what that is, I just know it's the save." She's like, we're like, "Yeah, it used to, that's what the discs used to look like, that's why it's the save icon." It's kinda like hanging up the phone, doesn't make sense anymore.
I end up calling someone on your iPhones, if the other person hangs up first, then it goes to your, like, favorite screen, so that you...
I'll leave messages if you want to hang up.
Yeah.
Right. Anybody remember the, I think it was Demolition Man? That movie was in the nineties? Yeah, it was in the, and then they had Frozen, people, um... And then it was like seventy years later, and it's the police department, and the guy answers his phone, and he's like, "Thanks for calling the San Angeles Police Department, if you'd like an outbid system, please plus one." So they can all stuff from the mail, don't they?
Yeah, I suppose to the state and, um, state's supposed to shut, yeah.
Yeah. I suppose it's cheaper than having a road stand, because one of the machines.
Yeah.
They don't give those machines away for nothing?
No. Like, I tried to use it, it wasn't big enough. Scale wasn't big enough.
Is it?
Mm-hmm. Motion to approve the money disaster.
Hey, Jamie, when you get a chance, like, you're talking about the wax, you think it should, so... Could you, like, jot those down and let me know your thoughts of what you're thinking that wants to be improved on that, so then I can look into it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good, thank you.
I have a motion to approve the bills.
I have a motion.
I'll second it.
Any questions? I mean, none, Jamie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Okay, we got six minutes before that.
You're gonna do the dip book, okay, I got a call.
What's that?
A call, uh, Dawn wants to be in here when you do that.
Yeah.
Yep, you're right, I can hear her. All right, thanks. No, I don't. All right, thanks.
Well, do I have a motion to approve, uh, the duplicate warrant five four four eight nine for five hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-six cents?
On motion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Let's wait for Dawn, if she's got anything to add to it, but we'll leave it.
Oh, you think she might?
I don't know if it's that as much as the second part.
Okay.
Okay.
We can wait.
Hurry up and wait.
Yeah. We have that. We have that on the. But now your chairman cornered us. That's an open, we can't do anything else until we, did you have any questions on the duplicate warrant?
No, I did not, as long as.
Yep, all right. Then, uh, Jamie, how do you vote?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean, aye. We were waiting for you. On that one, they said in case you had something you wanted to talk about. Okay, then bank signature.
Okay, so I called the bank to pull Alice off of all my accounts, of course, and they wanted minutes from you guys. And I kind of think we did this before, but when I asked them if I could use those before, I kind of understood that I had to put in there that they revise, get signatures and so. I thought maybe I would just try to come up with a really blanket, blanket authorization for me to ask people and take off people who didn't need to be on the accounts anymore. So that we don't have to go through this every time for every bank. So, if that makes sense to you, if that's okay with you.
I, I know where you're going with it. I, I don't know if it would make sense to the financial institutions because usually they want specifics. But, I mean, I think we should move to remove Alice from those. Is there any other secondary person that would be on those or would it just be you then?
Um, Kathy is on the Bank of North Dakota only because we write refund checks to people. Other than that, no.
Okay.
I am the sole person on those accounts then.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thoughts, I'm, yeah, I'm thinking about this one too. Me and she's the only one on there.
Right.
Could be. Okay. But for now, let's, yeah, let's do the.
I would move to remove, um, Alice from any, uh, signatures, um, on the banks that we have her as a signature holder.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that? How do you vote Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye. So now you have official.
But we'll just have to think about.
If you're gonna talk about the specific banks, then you probably better cover, you better put in our Bank of North Dakota and Union State Bank then because I'm gonna need it for both of them.
To remove them?
Yeah. I don't think she's on any of the other ones.
Well, our, I think our.
Like I said, that's kind of why I was looking for a blanket thing provided.
Well, I think our motion does cover that.
To remove Alice from Spider from all bank accounts slash signatures.
That should be.
Yeah.
If that's not good enough for them, then just come back to us and we'll, we'll name them specifically if we have to, but I don't know that we would.
Okay, all right.
And as far as authorization, I, I, I want to say it this way, Dawn, I think it would even be of best interest even for you if you came to the commission to get authorization to add someone rather than just having him as a open authorization. Where you just, if you get a new employee, you just do it on your own. I think that would also, getting the commission to approve that would also add security to yourself, so to speak. I, I think that, I understand it's, you gotta come, probably come in here every time, but it shouldn't happen that often.
Let's hope it doesn't.
I hope the next time I come in here, there's somebody on it to be the last one.
Yeah, but I, I think that would be best on, that you come in and request it. It's only for your own, um, I, I don't know the right word for it, but for your own safety also, so that people can't question it.
And that would be like an audit question too, like if, you know? Because when we have our audit, that would be possibly a red flag.
It's also nine thirty.
Yeah. So.
Not trying to rush you, we'll come back to you.
Yeah. We'll probably, I, I think there'll be other things on here that we might have to bring Dawn in for, but, um, I would move to close the, um, acceptance of bids for the air compressor.
Okay.
Second. Thanks, Dawn.
Any further discussion? Well, Travis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye.
I do.
Yep.
I got the rest of my commission keeping me in line. I ask them to do that because I got a lot going on.
Okay, Jason Anderson, a hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Is that the only bid we got?
Yes. Hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-seven cents. I'm going to approve Jason Anderson's bid for one hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-seven cents.
I will second.
Any further discussion? Amy Nunn, Jamie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean, aye?
I think we'd like to have it picked up within a week if possible. I believe that was actually on the bid.
Yeah, I think it was in the.
But, but I thought it was, I thought it said today, to pick up today. Within the week of, within the week of today. Okay. Day, a week from today. That's perfect in the advertisement.
Okay. Well, we can, got that done.
I move up to other.
We can, pardon?
Beaver.
Yeah, we can do Beaver. You're up.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm glad we got to move you up because this might be a short meeting, so it's good to follow you forward.
So, um, I did forward, um, to Carmen, she said she forwarded out to you, the slideshow that, uh, we presented at the Epic Conference.
Okay.
Um, and those kind of outlined the things that we're working on in Mercer County, so I didn't ask first of all if you have any questions related to that.
Um, the biggest, is Hazen not contributing to any portion of this?
To any portion of?
Like in the, on the front of yours, says that Beulah's committed, but is Hazen not any part of it?
Hazen did not participate in the conference, uh, so it was, uh, and so through, um, McAd is where Hazen participated. Uh, so we presented on behalf of Beulah and, uh, McAd. So.
So not directly but indirectly through McAd, yeah, Hazen did. If that makes sense.
I get that, but.
Yeah. I know what you're saying.
Dollar amounts and.
No, so I just, like I said, I wanted to give you that so you had an idea of what we're doing.
I guess it's, I hate that, like, we're talking about Mercer County, but it's Beulah and Mercer County and we're not in, the other cities within the county are not included when Mercer County represents all of them, so.
Well, Buster and I went through the slideshow together, Buster and I go through everything together, so, uh.
Probably just a future note, maybe list the other cities within Mercer County, even if they're not directly involved. But I think that's what you're getting at, Jamie.
It just, Beulah's not the only.
No, I get it.
Maybe a technicality or formality, but we've got a lot of other cities.
So, are there any questions related to it? Uh, we did get a, I got a call on Friday. Uh, the Epic Conference, uh, they had, uh, six requests for the slideshow. They said that, uh, our, uh, presentation was the most well-attended and they've had the most, uh, positive feedback, people requesting information, so. That is a positive and I think I've had about a dozen engineering firms call me since then, so.
Offering to provide their services?
Yes.
Okay.
So anyway, I won't go through all that, um, but, you know, two of the things that are listed in there are the housing study and labor study. Uh, last time I was here, we talked about the Next Move Group and moving forward with that. The, we did receive our, uh, our first deposit on the, the grant and we're looking to engage, uh, Next Move Group. And we're looking for, uh, looking at contributing fifty thousand dollars from that, uh, uh, grant proceeds uh, towards the employment of Next Move Group. Beulah JDA has agreed to contribute twenty-five thousand, um, to that, uh, to the hiring of the consultant. We've, um, asking, um, I'm here on behalf of McAd asking if the Mercer County would take and contribute twenty-five thousand, uh, from the fifty thousand dollars that were allocated to pay the balance, um, of that. The, there's be additional funds for travel and so forth and those will come out of the grant funds. So I would ask if it would be possible for the, uh, commission to approve that. We, uh, we did get a pretty good discount on it, the total cost of the, uh, was a hundred and seventeen thousand seven fifty, but they're giving it to us, uh, at one oh two. And like I said, any difference will be made up by the grant funds. And that does include a complete labor, labor analysis and study, a housing study and strategy, a comprehensive strategic plan. And, um, and then they do some education courses also.
Do we need another housing study? I mean, I think we have numerous buildings in Hazen and Beulah that are not full. Apartment wise and stuff, so do we need a study for another unit when what we have is not full?
Well, in Beulah, there are no rentals available and last time I checked, there was only eleven houses on the market.
Okay.
So, um, all of these.
So ener- energy, new energy, those are all full?
They're a hundred percent full.
Okay.
Yep.
I was told they weren't, so that's fine.
Um, and the primary reason for the studies is for new businesses coming here to take a look at and then for also for marketing, uh, our county. So, um, the last housing study we did, uh, that was done, um, down, I can't remember, I think it was twenty seventeen. And because of that study, that's the only reason we got the daycare in Hazen. That was the, the basis that, uh, the loan and was approved and so forth. Um, but these new businesses coming in, we don't have any, uh, you know, regularly available data on Mercer County for new businesses coming in. Um, I would also like to add that, um, Next Move Group is probably, uh, the leader in US for placing companies on sites and site selection. And so the more they know about Mercer County, uh, better, better it'll be for us in the future for, uh, potential future placement of the other industries.
Your slideshow says that there's three frac sand mines, are we not, is there not four?
Those are only three that I know of. There's proponent, uh, Sebastian, and then I'm not sure what, I know the name, but I can't think of the one that's on. Straight, uh, east of, uh, Neckles.
Okay, so, yeah, there, Asgard still has a pit too, but I don't know that it's active, but it's there.
Okay.
Well, for discussion, I'll move to approve the twenty-five thousand dollars to the McAd for the, um, grant writing support.
Do you have a second?
I'll second for discussion purposes.
Okay, any further discussion?
I think it kind of, well, go ahead, Jamie.
Go ahead. I still, I just, I, to me, a lot of this, I get it's a Mercer County, a lot of it seems to benefit the city of Beulah and be about Beulah and kind of leaving behind the other communities within this county. And we talk about new businesses, but our existing businesses are struggled, struggling to stay alive, so I'm not opposed to some money, but I'm slightly opposed to the twenty-five thousand, only because I feel like the other communities across the county would help in this if they supported it. But correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I mean, when we talk about rare earth and critical minerals, that's not going to be in any towns, that's going to be in the county. Um, a lot of the stuff that's, you know.
Right outside of city limits, but still, so.
And I'm not opposed to it either. Uh, for one, that would be twenty-five thousand of the fifty we've allocated. But also, and to Jamie's point specifically, like under housing here, um, I would like to see when we get a report of the housing availability in all five communities in our county. I think there's five, right?
Six.
Six?
Six.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean, that's why I didn't say names. Because I left one out probably, but, you know, all six, I'd like to see that for all six, itemized, all available.
I mean, I have a hard time believing that a recycling center can be
But, yeah, the rest of them.
Sustainable here.
Partnerships, labor, recycle, regional recycling center. I even have, but that's for another discussion. Okay, any other discussion? So, read back the motion.
Um, free move to approve twenty-five thousand for grant writing use for this housing and labor study.
Was that?
Second in it.
Correct?
That'd be correct.
Hearing no further discussion. Travis?
Aye.
Jamie? I'll vote aye. Motion passed.
Thank you for consideration and, uh, it will include every city in Mercer County. Uh, and it is Mercer County wide, I guess, I just, Beulah and Hazen are working very closely together and it's because we have the only two economic development directors. And so, it, so a lot of times, I'm, I'm sure things get tainted that way, but we do invite the other cities to all our meetings, so.
Okay. And I, I, I mean, I've been to a lot of those meetings and I know, um, Golden Valley's mayor's been there, um, Big City's mayor's been there, um.
And if they don't want to participate, that, that's fine, but when we say Beulah and Mercer County Economic Development, it portrays a picture of it's just about Beulah and that's not what I like to see, I guess.
I'll be very conscious of that in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Beaver. Really close.
Isn't too much we can jump to. Do we need a break? Two, three minute break?
No, I, I think we're gonna have a break shortly after this.
Okay. That's the way I see everything here. We've pretty much got a, a nine forty-five time slot and then.
I, um, do, I believe there was some individuals for the ten o'clock spot though that were out there, so maybe they didn't get the memo that it was.
Oh, I think they all did. There was some of them that
Who?
Were questioning if it really was going to get removed.
Okay, I just, I did see some out there, so.
I know a couple of them said, well, we'll see you tomorrow. And I said, you're more than welcome to come, but that item will be removed from the agenda.
Okay.
Hey, we only got about forty-five seconds, so we'll just idly wait here.
Right.
For their first, oh, I better find policy four oh three.
Uh, I don't have it in there. Glenn's not a.
Well, no, I can't.
Yeah. Do you have a copy?
We have eight special meetings, I don't think.
For me to read?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I think we have, we don't have those special assessment districts.
Sit here and wait and I don't even have a copy of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not gonna read the whole policy, I'm just gonna read the effective change.
Is there any changes in the list from?
Thank you.
The last, from what was discussed at the last meeting?
Okay, this'll be the first reading of, uh, policy four oh three paydays. I'll just read basically the change. Mercer County will require all employees to sign up for direct deposit effective July one of twenty twenty-four. Currently, they, there are a few employees that receive a paycheck, paper paycheck. So we're just changing that to everyone has to receive, um, their paycheck by direct deposit.
Complaints or heartburn about that, were they supposed to submit it in writing to the auditor's office?
Yes, they were.
Okay, because I've had, I've. Okay, because I've had, I've had numerous comments to me about it, but I, I did ask that they submitted if it was a legitimate thing that they wanted to discuss, so, but nobody has.
I've had nothing come in.
Formally, yeah.
That's it, we just have to have two reads of it, and then it'll become effective after the twenty-first.
We should probably have a motion that we did the first reading, just so that's in there. I have a pink so, Todd's here. Do we, do we do a motion for the first reading, or no?
No.
Okay, then we don't.
Okay, are we gonna set a time for?
We have it set at nine thirty.
Okay.
Yeah, make it.
Nine thirty, yes, it is. It's nine, actually got nine. Your agenda says nine thirty for upcoming, I guess.
It's also on the memo.
This was sent out to all employees, that it would be at nine thirty on the next meeting.
Okay. Well, then we've had the reading.
Okay, we'll take a, I don't know, ten, five, ten, ten minute recess.
Look, you guys sneaking.
Yep, we will, because we've got forty-five minutes until the next. Yeah.
Okay, so that was at nine forty-six or forty-seven, Jean?
Pardon?
Was it forty-six or forty-seven?
Forty-seven, it had just turned over.
Got it, thank you. Ten thirty is our next thing, right?
Eleven, oh, I was looking at eleven already, yeah, you're right, I thought it was a ten fifteen, yeah.
Oh, you're correct. I was correct. That's rare.
Can you what?
Yes, I believe you can.
But she said a lot of comments, so I told her, make me a list of what you're thinking of these. But they know it, we use that little credit cards.
Well, yeah, there's things that we're, we have.
Yeah, we'll discuss it. Because I got everything. Oh, right, okay, we'll figure it out, and then we bring it on the report next time, so they're aware of that.
And I'm, I'm gonna agree that.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Dan. How's it going?
Pretty good, just realized I was just making a note about it as a break, I have my, I don't actually have with me the travel tickets.
Dan!
You were probably ready.
I'm gonna pause it, put that recorder back on. Took forever this morning. Okay, so we're supposed to be back at seven, right?
Technically.
Oh, well.
Well, all three of us have to be back to register.
Yes, correct.
If one still doesn't, it's not a problem.
So, I think, well, and what can we do, we can have a list.
It sucks, but there was, yeah.
Obviously, our forms too close to.
Don't you let it get.
It turns us into a lack of a quorum, like.
Well, I, I have told someone, asked me last night, I said, there's not. Not gonna be enough of us.
It would've been nice to have known earlier that they weren't gonna be here.
Agreed. Liza was last night.
Right.
And I'm not sure that we're supposed to, I don't know.
Hold, you guys hostage, can we reconvene?
No, we can't.
Sorry. Okay, we'll reconvene. I'm a minute late. Okay, we can move on to. Can we do the HR update?
It's under other.
Yeah, and budget, we've got a lot there. Well, let's start with HR update.
Good. I think Todd wanted to be here too, so do you let him know that for the HR?
Yes.
Okay.
Who's that?
Todd.
Oh, yeah, he said he'd be in.
Just here.
I was just in his office, I came from there, and he said, see you in a minute. Um, is there something you wanna present with, that you don't need Todd here?
Um, I can just tell you what has happened since I took over, officially started full-time Monday. Still setting up the office over there. Ron moved to the office by Jamie, and I took over the veteran service office area. Just trying to get things set up and going. Have had some discussions with some employees, I did send out an email, and I believe all of you got that email as well, too. Planning in the next few weeks to go around and start visiting with everybody in their departments. So, and that's why I have a calendar outside my door, so if I go over to the highway department one morning, I'll put on there at highway department, so they'll, they'll know where I'm at, so. But that's my next step, is to be with all of the friends.
Can you let Todd know that, um, ready for him?
Other than that, it's just.
Thank you.
Getting started.
So, can I be officially with your first name?
Yeah, well, right, I started meeting in, but.
March first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we said March first.
Yeah, March first.
It was in the motion, you're right.
I have here, trying to find it. What are you looking for? Per, um.
This.
This thing, the budget?
Yeah.
Yes, well.
Can I get a look at that too?
Yep.
I don't have an extra one.
Okay.
After, yeah. Okay.
You presented us with a proposed budget. Well, anyone got any questions on this?
Well, obviously, like, since we're, we started March first, there will be some out of the salary that won't be the full amount, that we could potentially play with for if she needs other things, not.
Well, and I mean, she'll be under the general, general fund, correct?
Yeah, it will.
So, I mean, it's.
Because that thirty-six thousand, she's still got benefits that need to be covered in things, so I don't even think.
But we did, so that was not, benefits were not put into the budget, because we talked about it October fifth.
You, all that was made a motion to put into the budget was a wage per wage, and benefits were not included in that wage.
I think we just did the cinema on sixty-five thousand.
I think the video, though, on October fifth, it said, we said benefits and salary, and it was, okay.
Well, I mean, we, we pay the benefits, it's, it's kind of a moot point, I mean, we'll have to do what we have to do, but.
Right.
I don't see any issues with the budget that's laid out.
No.
I think we just have to approve so that she has the authorization to, you know, purchase certain items, and then obviously, travel per DM will be on a reimbursement basis, education and training will be signed up, so. I mean, I would move to approve the budget set out for the HR.
Seventy-nine thousand five, seventy-nine nine fifty?
Seventy-eight six fifty.
Yours is different.
Yeah.
You have a different one.
There's a, a paper in your stack.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I adjusted some numbers in there.
Why do I have two different ones?
I had, Liza had, I sent one to Liza previously, she might have sent that to you. But then, since I moved into the veteran service office, I didn't need furniture or anything, because there was a desk and all that in there. So that's the difference of why it went down, so.
Yeah, my motion would be to approve this. Yeah, the seventy-eight thousand six fifty.
Okay.
I'll second.
And then, but you, it's, did you make a motion, sorry?
I did, to, to approve that budget.
Okay, do I have a second to that motion?
I did.
Gee whiz, I gotta keep up, keep up with my own meeting. Okay, now discussion. Under, um, okay, so these other. I'm reading, trying to read here pretty fast. Office supplies, that is this other itemized list that you had?
Correct, yes.
Calculator, stuffer, and that, okay, all right.
And I already purchased some of those on my own already, so I have some of that stuff, so it's more than likely gonna be less than what was on there, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions?
Um, as far as like a laptop and stuff, I know Carmen, you've done that through Armor, we're working on that?
Okay. No, we've got it.
No, I want a laptop too, I would like a laptop too, so like when I go to the highway department, I can get onto my computer stuff.
Okay, so, um, and that's, then that's something else I didn't know you wanted.
Yeah, that, she has it in the budget.
Yeah.
Okay. Then talk to Armor.
Okay.
Because I think that's something we'd have to purchase, because I don't think we have any extras in those.
Okay.
The other one, we used another computer that we already had for the desktop.
Right, but doesn't the auditor's office have a list of things that need to be swapped out on certain years?
Yeah.
Just so that you're a part of the conversation?
What I'm saying is, if she wants an additional laptop, that's just something we don't have, you know what I mean, extra.
Yeah.
There's only so many. So she'll have to just request it?
Okay.
Good.
Then you have eighteen hundred for printer.
That is a printer through ABM, it's a copier, ax, scanner. What we would do is, I've worked with Mike Knuth from Advanced Business Methods. Dawn does a lot more volume than I will do, so what they do, they have a machine already in Bismarck, I believe, that would do thirty-five pages per minute, and they would give that one to Dawn, and then I would just take Dawn's machine, which is twenty-five pages per minute. And the total amount for that will be like, my cost would be a hundred and thirty-six fifty-four a month. And then Dawn's would increase to a hundred and fifty dollars per month, it would actually save the county by doing that twenty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents a month.
I just have questions, and as black and white as I am, state, why does every department have to have a contracted copier from I, from Advanced Business Machines? Or Methods, or whatever it's called, ABM? You know, we got one in the tax equalization, I think, we got one probably in the recorder's office, got one in the treasurer's office, one in the auditor's office, one in the sheriff's office, one probably in the clerk court's office. I mean, we got these, I've worked in a office where we had fifty people, and there were two printers.
Let me raise one point, dealing with HR is a lot of confidential information. So, if we make Alice send it to any other office to get it copied, we're repeatedly breaching it, because with any of these printers, since they're all computerized, you can go in and print off everything that's already been printed, get another copy of it. So having something that's exclusive to her, because of the sensitivity and confidentiality and the security that's required, she needs one that would be separate.
I'm just thinking, because I do know, like in our office, we had a printer, but it was just a, you know, whatever you call it, a hundred and fifty dollar printer. And then we, if we had it something we needed to just print off, we did, but if we had a large document, we sent it to the central printer, and then you'd go down and get it, so. My, my thing is, I'm not opposed to the premise of a printer copier just for the HR department. I think we, as a commissioner, are gonna have to look at this in the future, why we need, six of them when you're all within walking distance of a printer, and then if you have a need for, get, get, we can get a smaller printer, where we don't have to have a contract with ABM to have, um, I, I just, I don't see the efficiency in having all these contracted printers around myself. So, for now, I would say I'll go along with this, but I think the commission is gonna need to look at this in the future and consolidate, have a, like a central place where a printer can be located, one or two, and I don't see the need of having one, two, three, four, five within, you know, sixty feet. I just. I need more than, I need more explanation than what I'm getting.
Right.
So, okay, that's for now.
Yeah, but we're still under the discussion for the motion.
Yes.
Okay. Didn't want you to forget about.
Thanks for reminding me, nope. Okay, any other discussion? Jean used up his time. Okay, hearing none, uh, wait, where did I put it down, did Travis make the motion?
I did.
Okay, Jamie? Oh, Travis?
I'll say aye.
I'll say aye also.
Jean will say aye, motion passed. So you got the budget.
Authorization.
Authorized agent of PERS.
And that would be Blue Cross Blue Shield, Guardian Life, all the benefits that we have here, so I'm able to speak with them.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Do we need to spell them all out, or?
We need to listen, yes.
So, could I get that list?
Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Okay, one, Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Um, Aflac. Our vision insurance.
Well, vision, that's through Blue Cross.
Okay, okay.
Aflac.
Garden, Guardian Life.
Which one?
Guardian Life and our life insurance.
Nationwide.
Nationwide.
Oh, yeah.
And PERS.
Okay, I got PERS, Nationwide. True State.
True State, yes.
And I believe that is it.
Okay.
I can't think of any other.
Is there anything still to do with?
Stage used to be Kuna.
Okay, that was, I was gonna say, what, what is Kuna now?
And it changed.
Okay. I will move to give access to Alice as our HR. To PERS, Blue Cross Blue Shield, North Dakota, Aflac, Guardian Life, Nationwide, and True State.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Do we want the Blue Cross Blue Shield to say vision and dental, because they are, it's all Blue Cross, but they're different, because it's Concordia.
That would allow her to have access to that, because we have to go through Blue Cross Blue Shield. So I have, no, you have to go through Blue Cross.
I'm just saying to add vision and dental.
Just to make sure.
Well, it can be subnoted, but yeah, if I've got access to Blue Cross Blue Shield, if you got access to our
Plan.
Coverage, then whatever's under that umbrella, you should, it should.
But before you guys second it, I want to verify the first part of this, Travis. Move to give, our, our move to have our HR become an authorized agent.
Yeah, move to have Alice as our HR representative to have access.
I think they gotta use our agent.
Or can we just put HR? Because then it gives that office.
Yeah.
To PERS, Blue Cross, Aflac, Guardian Life, Nationwide, True State. Okay, do we have a motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Travis, Jamie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Okay, um, I know it's here EM position, but.
Okay, now that was something that Liza called and requested.
Right, that does not.
To add it.
You didn't have anything on EM.
Um, I did, I spoke with Liza. Um, there was no applicants received, except for, you know, mine, at that point. So, she was thinking maybe we should advertise a little more.
Liza, I thought, checked with Tanya yesterday, and there was one.
Oh, there is one now, okay.
I believe there was one.
Okay.
Um, I think we should, we need to have that clarified.
I will, I'll call Tanya today to see if she received any. Um, but I know, when, last time I talked to Tanya, we were talking about maybe, um, expanding the advertising of that position and extending it a little bit longer, but I'll visit with Tanya today to see if she did receive an application.
Okay.
How, how long, how long was that ad out for?
It went till, it closed on Friday.
It closed on March first.
Our closing date on.
I recommend opening it up a little longer. I don't know who applied, I can tell you that there's a couple people that I think would be a good fit, and they're contemplating it yet. There's nothing illegal extending it.
I think, should we extend it to the next meeting? Applications, let's just do more weeks.
Extend it to the...
The twenty-first?
The twentieth?
Okay, extending it, we would...
Yeah, I'll have to put it back in the paper, in our job service, and...
That was going to be my question, there's, there's ample time to have it, I mean, not that we extend it, you advertise it, and a day later, we have the next commission meeting. So the next commission meeting is the twenty-first. So that'll be ample time to get it in the paper, and basically to advertise it.
You'd get one more week of advertising.
Okay.
At, at minimum.
And I would put on the Daco website, job service, our website, the paper.
Oliver County.
Oliver County.
So we, we need a motion to extend it another, until the twenty-first?
I would do, yeah.
Unless, unless you wanna review the applicants on the twenty-first, I would suggest the twentieth.
I'll make a motion to extend the application for the EM position till the March twentieth at nine AM.
Nine AM, okay.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I will second that.
Any further discussion? Hear none, Jamie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean, aye.
Okay. Do we wanna time on that?
She said nine.
Nine AM.
Nine AM on the twentieth.
That was in Jenny's motion.
Okay, you, no, Jane's motion said that all applications will be in March twentieth, nine AM. I'm asking, when do you want it on the agenda?
A time for on the twenty-first, yes.
Yes.
Jean and I were thinking the same thing.
Which doesn't mean much, but...
Is there any, well...
I don't, uh, I don't know, um, what else do we, what, what times are open? Is nine AM open?
No, because nine AM is when you open the meeting, do your, nine thirty is when we have our second reading of the policy.
Nine thirty?
Ten will likely be...
Nine thirty is when that is, but what were you saying?
Ten o'clock, we'll probably have to put the Farrington line request back on there for next meeting. Because we moved it off today.
You didn't tell those guys, okay, so we want Farrington on at ten. I don't know how long that, like, how long will it take if you look at the EM position, how much time would you need? Because...
Few minutes, why are we just? We're not interviewing, we're just...
Just reviewing applications, they won't take that.
And then we would set.
I know, but we need, I... If, if on the twentieth and the, could we potentially interview on the twenty-first, because otherwise, we're just continuing to kick this process off.
Yeah, but how much time do we need to review the applications on the twentieth? Not more than...
Fifteen minutes, not even, yeah.
So what do we have at nine thirty?
Can you put it, yeah, do like a nine forty-five?
Right, that's, I was gonna say, what, what, do we have again at nine thirty?
Nine thirty is your second reading of policy.
Oh, yeah, nine...
Okay, nine forty-five, how do you want me to put that, you guys are gonna review?
EM.
Applications, EM applications. Is that how we wanna do it?
Yeah. Can we try to, if, can you or Tanya, since we're doing nine AM on the twentieth, if it's possible to arrange interviews the afternoon, or like eleven o'clock on the twenty-first?
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to speak with Tanya, I'll be out that week, but I'll talk to Tanya, see if she can handle that for you. So we can get interviews set up right away if we need to.
And then if you interview, then, and we set it up, it'll be like we did with Alice, it'll be a special meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, it's all good?
Yep. So I'll put that on my, to do less with Tanya, too.
I just don't wanna push this, it'll be another month yet, and...
Yeah.
Anything else from our HR department?
Um, just, you saw that transition plan that Tanya developed for, um, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it?
Did I give a copy of that, Alice?
Not yet, I'll give it to you.
I need a copy of it.
That was also in my pile of stuff here.
And then, um, Tanya is also suggesting that I have a county work cellphone. So I should not be using my personal cellphone, um, because if it ever comes to litigation, they can actually take my phone away, so...
They can't take it away, but they can rip it, and you can't just say, I'm gonna take this, this, and this.
Yeah, they take the whole thing. What, so we have a, a county plan for basically the Sheriff's Department, right, and a few other? It'd just be adding to...
Oh, for a cellphone?
Yeah.
I believe that's all we'd have to do, I'd have to lay that sense of...
I would, I would move to get, um, Alice a, um, county-issued, um, cellphone.
I'll second.
Motion is on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Um, I better write this down. Okay, Travis, Jamie. Any further discussion? Hear none, Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye. I can't even find my transition letter. Sorry, I have it here, but I... Anything else?
Okay, Alice, I'll give it to you. Any questions on the transition plan?
Not at this time, I don't have any.
No, I don't. All I know is you're gonna be busy for a little while. Anything else for Alice?
Do we need to make a motion to accept this transition plan?
No, I don't think so. What, what, what action is in here?
Just workflow policies, work, workflow, for some departments. I'd like page two for a timeline, I probably need to address some of those things.
I don't... To me, I, I, at this one, I'm, I'm at a loss, because to me, this is, uh, standard stuff. We don't need a motion to approve an interview question form or evaluation form.
Does it need board approval?
No.
Fine with that.
Alice, telling you, these are the goals she set in for the, this may hope she got to.
The transition.
What was that?
It's just informative.
Right.
Right now, I was gonna transition from the Auditor's Office to the HR role. And then, just so you're aware, I'm just gonna remind you, I will be out March fifteenth through twenty-second.
You can keep that, I've got it somewhere, but I will find it again.
And then April seventeenth, I'll be at the North Dakota State Government HR Conference in Bismarck. And on the eighteenth and nineteenth, I'll be out of the office for my son's wedding in Vegas, so... And I plan to be on the, uh, Ethic Age Commission meeting, so I can give you updates on a regular basis.
That will be greatly appreciated.
Do you have any more, any questions for me?
I don't, anybody else? Nope. Thank you.
Thank you.
We got seven minutes. We... Okay, we did that one. Cross that one off. Was there something budget, I just wrote down budget?
Yeah, I can talk about that for a little bit.
Okay.
Um, as far as budget stuff, Carmen and I were talking yesterday, and trying to think forward to budget season, I know it feels like we just did one, but that's, that's how budgets work, it just kinda continues on, um... We wanna have kind of the process for the commission to bring forward ideas for the budget. Um, I don't know if it necessarily has to be a formal process, but, you know, when we're thinking about things throughout the year, how to get them into the preliminary budget, I know one instance, we were talking about audio and visual stuff in here for like presentations. We weren't necessarily saying motions, but to give you like ideas and...
Every person on the board knows what's going in there, I got, I think that would be good.
North Dakota County Commission Association website, there's a whole handbook, and there's a timeline on there, a budget timeline for auditors as to stuff that should be happening throughout the year.
Yep, and, and I've got that, along with my other stuff.
And it's on a Daco too, they link to each other, so...
And just so you know, with that, I, I did talk to Chris yesterday with Coal Facility Solutions. He's looking into that, I'm getting an update on, on these ideas that you guys have been talking about. So what I'm gonna do is get updated quotes, and then I'm sending them out to all of you. So then you guys can consider that, and those are just things that I know that were asked about last year, and then, like, uh, scanning all the minutes and having those online. And just so you know, our website is in the process of getting updated, so that's why we want that.
And that's, yeah, some of that stuff, it doesn't pay to do until we get the website up, so, yeah.
This would be our year, but anyway, I'm gonna send all that out once those quotes come in, because I wanna get a post to that. So then, everybody will get a copy of that.
And, and, I know for most people, it's not a, not much of an item, but, yeah, trying to get as paperless as we can, not, to me, this, just like now, I'm trying to, I was trying to find Alice's transition, I got it here somewhere, but I don't know, you know, I've got piles here. Where if we go paperless, it's just a tab, and you go to it and open it up, and you can see it.
Right, and that, I mean, that's kind of one thing, I guess if you are getting, maybe this is getting off topic, but if you're getting documents that are for upcoming meetings, it doesn't necessarily have to come to us, but maybe just send an email saying, hey, I've got stuff in your box for the twenty-first meeting, and we can stop and pick it up, just so that it's not, but we get here, and then we can't. You got five minutes to review it, and you don't have any information.
I know.
Right, and I thought about that, but a lot of times, people come, and all I'm doing is you guys gotta listen to what they're saying and what they're actually asking you, plus, I just try to get the data that I've got that could possibly help you, give you more information. But I don't know if sending it all out to you before, if you're not sure even what they're asking, because a lot of times...
That's even, um...
And I try to get that out of them, but it's kinda difficult.
I'm even...
You can only do so much with what you've got, but if you're getting documents from individuals, you know, say Beaver dropped this PowerPoint off two weeks ago.
No, he didn't.
But I'm even looking at it.
But I'm just saying.
Historical information, for instance, all, like our policy and all the, um, county, um...
Just trying to be more prepared, so that we're not...
I know, I was thinking about that too, but...
You know, and, and we can look up...
In the nature of the beast here, you guys meet, then you gotta hear what they're saying, so you guys can, you know, if I send you a ton of stuff, and it's like...
That, that's very well true.
I don't wanna be responsible.
Like all our ordinances, you know, they, they'd be on there, and when, when, when it's questioned, we can, you just go to the ordinances, you tab on it?
Hopefully with an updated website, we can get all of our up-to-date zoning ordinances and such on the website, because the one that is on our website now is not the current and accurate one.
And we need, we need that, like, right here, so when we're having our meeting, and someone wants to say, well, no, you passed that in twenty sixteen, now we can go look, right now?
Well...
Where do I look?
I know, but I don't know that much. I, I, you know, we can try, but remember, they gotta keep it up, I'll have to get that from the zoning board.
I'm just, other, other counties do do it, so I know it is possible, we just have to find out how to do it and not cost a fortune.
Another company that I'm on board, it is, I, I can go back to minutes in nineteen, I mean, way back twenty years ago, and every piece of documentation, every amendment made to everything.
And I always go back to a county, because their website is...
So anyway, something to look at.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything, oh, approaching ten thirty, we got a minute left. Like, we can go ahead, Vicki?
Can we do the...
Well, we can go ahead, it's only one minute, if someone from the public wants to come in, they, she, she won't be done, so go ahead. Once again, I gotta find the paperwork.
It's clipped together, the black clip, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carmen, for doing that, I didn't bring any paperwork, and then I heard nobody could find it, and I thought, okay, I should have brought it.
Yeah. I gave what I could.
Thank you. Uh, good morning, commissioners, my name is Vicki Steiner, I am an agent, a real estate agent with Homeland Company out of Dickinson. And I represent a listing that's for sale, um, just west of Beulah Bay Campground, uh, it's been for sale for about three years. It's a, a five acre plat currently, and the former state's attorney, Jessica Binder, when we had it approved by Planning and Zoning for the five acres, she said that if you decide in the future to split it up, then you would have to, um, consider a subdivision. So Cindy, um, Zugger told me, told us at our last, um, meeting that we went to with Planning and Zoning, you need to go before the county commissioners to do, what we would like to do now is, we have two buyers interested in the two acres, and we might have a buyer interested in the three acres, but we'd like to, uh, the seller, James Casper, his grandfather Otto Casper owned that, owned that land, and he's actually sold the right-of-way for the road that goes to Beulah Bay Campground to the county. And he owns the land to the north and to the south, and the land to the north is what we're discussing, that's the five acres that's right on, uh, the lake. Does everybody know in their mind exactly where this is? Have all of you been up to Beulah Bay Campground? Do you understand where the land is?
I do.
I know exactly where it's at.
I know exactly where it is, too.
You do? Okay, good. Um, so, um, the seller has asked, so Cindy said, um, you also need to go to the water board to make sure there's no water mitigation issues. And fortunately, the, uh, land drains into gullies that go directly to Lake Sakakawea. So, uh, Mark Cather is drafting a letter from their last Mercer County Water Board meeting, stating that there are no water mitigation issues, and we have to bring that back to Planning and Zoning. That doesn't go to you, but, um, Apex Engineering did take a look at it and said that we would not be affecting anybody else's properties. So that goes back to Planning and Zoning, and Planning and Zoning said that before we can come back to them to ask for, um, any type of variances, to, uh, make that, um, two acres buildable, that we would need to ask you for permission to split the plat, two acres on the west side and three acres to the east side. And that's the main purpose that I'm here today, for my seller.
Well, as it was even discussed last time, there's basically no room to even build, um, so, without variances. And I am, I for one, am definitely opposed to giving any variance on this... And I am, I for one am definitely opposed to giving any variance on this corner. One of them is, um, got to do with public. It's a highly traveled road. And do not want to put reduced speed limits on there. Well, I mean, the way I was, last time, the only, any building built would be within like, what was it? I, I don't want to be, got too many legal people here, but it was within like thirty feet or something of the road or... Which is way, way too close. Our setback is, I would have to look at the...
Hundred and thirty feet. It was a seventy-five foot setback. And Planning and Zoning approved it initially, the very first time, three years ago. But Wayne Nancy was, the former commissioner was on planning and zoning. And when he came back to the county commission meeting, he voted against it. So it already would have been sold under those variances, because we had a buyer at that time. So, um, if Wayne Nancy wouldn't have changed his mind at the county commission meeting, it actually would already be done. So it was flipped at the county commission level. Marv Schwerin yourself and Wayne Nancy voted against it. It was three-two. But what we're asking for today is not the variance. We're asking for the plat. We're asking you to, um, divide the five acres into two acres and three acres, so the plat can be recorded, um, in those dimensions. And then we go back to planning and zoning and we make our case for the variances again.
So all you're asking for right, right now is approval of the plat?
Correct. The plat was approved at five acres. We're asking for it to be, uh, we had an engineer work on it and he drew a line for us at two acres and then the three acres. So we're just asking for it to be split. This is the only body that can make that decision. Planning and zoning can't make it.
The zoning out there, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but those are five-acre lots, minimum requirement?
Our county's two acre.
It's two acre.
It's two acre.
Well, in, in that, in that regard... This five-acre lot can be divided down into two-acre lots. Doesn't take any action on the county commission.
Well, I mean, I'm trying to find it. It was, it was a drawing right here.
You're looking for the preliminary?
Well, it's on that conditional use permit.
That's what...
Right. I can't hear you.
It was on that conditional use permit. This one, this big paper? That if they want to divide it, they have to do a subdivision. And the reason why they did that was because penalty approved one approach, not two.
It's just this sheet.
Well, yeah, okay, we're...
Do, does a reapplication have to be done? To remove it from the existing permit? No?
What's this, uh... Oh, you just, that's, okay, never mind. I got that one. Was there a drawing that showed the lots? I thought I seen that.
The preliminary?
Two different lots.
They're going right up the top here. The preliminary that Vicki is, are these, right here. This is from twenty-six five four.
Correct, but...
This is what she's requesting approval of. The rest of this is history.
Yes.
This is from past stuff, so that's what Vicki presented. That, I just moved from the archives, just so you guys would have the background. Which I don't know if that adds good or bad. I don't know.
I need clarity on those. So you're asking to plot two lots, one two acre and one three acre?
Correct.
Okay.
And he would like to record it with the county. And Cindy Zugger said the only board that can approve that change, because Jessica Binder is the state's attorney and said it has to stay five acres until you have county action that would change that. So we can't, we did ask Planning and Zoning to do it and they said, no, go see the county commission. So that's why we're here today.
So yeah, they were at Planning and Zoning. Planning and Zoning had the concern on the Water Resource Board, because the Water Resource Board has the ordinance on stormwater management plans. As Vicki had stated, she was at the Water Resource Board meeting, um, the last one that they had. And between the board and their engineer, Jennifer Moley with Apex, didn't see an issue splitting it as far as the Water Resource Board is concerned. If we approve it, essentially, they can record that and have two lots. However, you know, as far as residents and things like that, would still have to go to Planning and Zoning for them to actually move forward on, you know, the development of it.
And that's, um, where I'm at on this is we, we can approve those two lots, but then, uh, Mr. Schwartz buys one of them. And, uh, now he's got to come to us and get variances, possibly. So it's kind of like, it, 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 yeah, if we approve them, okay, but no one's going to be able to build on them. Because you're going to have to get a variance and I... The setbacks are there for a reason and I, I know I am not going to change my, uh, position on the setbacks. They're going to have, and if you, and if, when you sell this property, I'm hoping that you would inform the buyers that these are the setbacks. And if, uh, you don't get a variance on it, then you won't be able to do anything with it. That, that's my only take on it. I, I guess maybe that's not for me to even get into or say here. But I just want that known.
And we do that. We always, it's contingent upon, uh, county commission approval, because you're the final say beyond planning and zoning.
So as far as splitting them up, yeah, okay, if we haven't violated any of our, um, uh, any central code or any ordinance, yeah. Then I don't see a problem with it. It's just that...
Right, we have to go back to planning and zoning, because we couldn't talk to them about the variances until you approved the plat. So it's, we have to go here first and then go back.
And we do have, we do allow down to two acres?
Yeah.
Okay, that, when I'm not, I don't even know.
I think it was around...
Jen, do you know on that?
It is two acres. It used to be one, I think in around 2016. I think we went to two.
Okay, I, it's, I think that's been changed several times.
Yeah, and I mean, the, um, health department in the state, um, rural subdivisions with the septic system is limited at one acre on the statewide, but county skin, go higher. Okay, and we're at two.
All right.
But just to get the formal discussion on here, I will move to approve, um, the plat to split it, um, track two into a two-acre parcel and a three-acre parcel.
Hold on a second.
Any further discussion?
And just the discussion would be added that it would still have to go through planning and zoning for any type of things. This is just to create the lots and nothing more.
Yeah, that's all we're doing. We're, I'm not approving any variances. We're not approving, we're not, we're not even approving a building on it. We're just, you got yourself two lots. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, Travis?
Aye.
Where did I write this down up here? Jamie? Jean will vote aye. Motion passed.
Uh, thank you for that. And then also, um, I, can I move into the discussion on the Pebble Beach access?
It's on the agenda, so...
Sure.
And that's, okay.
Yeah, right there, Jane.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, it's, uh, it, it's something that just personally concerns me. We did have a contractor from Bismarck call about only wanting the Pebble Beach Trail and the gully area. And before we get into private sale of the Pebble Beach, um, trail, you're all familiar with Pebble Beach and that small trail that goes down to it. That is privately owned. And my personal concern is they will have the right to fence that off, um, as the owner currently does. But, um, I would hope that we could work out something with the county to leave it public access in the future. The seller is willing to do that. And I think while you have a willing seller on the trail, you should try and do maybe some type of negotiation with him on that and get it into the public hands. Um, once it is sold into private hands, um, I don't know if you can get it back. That's my concern. And I know people really enjoy, uh, I think it's only one of two possibly beach areas on Lake Sakakawea where you can drive a pickup down on the beach. I know the Corps would like it fenced off. The Corps doesn't like the pickups down there. But, um, right now, just by the public using it, I think, um, and there's an expectation by the public, I think that you own it. I don't think they understand that it's a trespass situation. So he has two offers for you and they're not, it's not a permanent offer in the sense that, you know, there may be things you want and other things that he may want. But just to start the discussion, he wanted to let you know what he's thinking money-wise. But there are a few other things he's interested in and there could be things you're interested in. So if you wanted us to negotiate with your state's attorney or someone or the chairman, um, we would, the seller would be, is willing to talk to you about how do we, um, make this work for you. I know you don't have it in your budget, because you weren't planning on hearing this discussion. So maybe the payment plan has to be worked out. Maybe, um, you like the lease, because it's cheaper, or maybe you just want to buy it and be done. And know that if you want to expand the campground at some point for daytime picnic use, you could clear out those trees down there and expand the campground. So it might be you want to buy it. But either way, a ninety-nine-year lease, I think, is a terrific way for very little money, thousand a year, to get you public access for ninety-nine years. And then also, if at some point you have the ability to buy it, then you can negotiate that in your contract to have a first-time, uh, offer to, like, you would be the first person in position to buy it. So, um, I'm doing everything I can to get you the trail.
Have you talked to the Beulah Park Board about this?
Um, not lately. I have not. I, I think, uh, uh, they've been good to us. We've been good to them. They, they had a fishing tournament for Beulah a couple of years ago and the Corps said they could not have a food truck. And Mr. Casper's land has a goose neck that goes right up to the entrance of Beulah Campground. It's that small ditch with those scrubbed trees and bushes. He owns that also. So they allowed, they called and said, would he allow us to put a food truck on that goose neck? And we said yes. And, and the seller agreed to it. So you would also get that piece, which would, might help for some of your events that you have there if the Corps says no. And so you would have ownership really close. And it also crosses two roads that go up into the campground. So I think the county, originally, when we started this discussion, the county thought they owned it. And after we had the, um, maps, uh, drawn, the engineer found that there was no ownership by the county there.
Well, that one, we're going to have to take under consideration at this time.
Yes, absolutely. I, I was, he actually gave you till the end of March. I know I can't be here for your next meeting, but, um, however you want, I, I just didn't want it sold out from underneath you and you didn't. I hadn't had a chance to talk to some of the newer commissioners about it. And I hope, uh, all the commissioners who are just coming into this process are aware that, um, it is a possibility. Uh, I didn't really get a decision the last time I asked you. It seems like nobody said yes or nobody said no, but I would definitely want a yes or no if you could give it to me at least, uh, by the end of March, so I know where you're at.
I think, uh, add it to the agenda for the 21st then.
Pardon?
I think add it to the agenda for the 21st, till the meeting we'll have before the end of the month.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, and I won't be able to be here and I understand you don't have Zoom capability. I could, I'll be traveling. But, um, I'll see if I could get the seller here, but I don't know if I can. But if you want us to try and work something out ahead of time through maybe your state's attorney, then he could present what we, and then maybe you could have a small working group, so we could meet your demands or whatever it is. And there might be some things you want. If you are going to purchase a three acres, maybe there's some conditions you want.
Well, as of right now, we're not going to commit to a, to a purchase in, like, now.
No.
This, this would take time and, and I'm not even sure we want to get into, uh, purchasing this property. I would, I would be more inclined to have the Beulah Park Board, um, get involved and it, 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 it affects them way more than, uh, than the county, so to speak. And if, um, anyway, I'll leave it at that.
Well, my argument for that would be that the county spends a lot of money on economic development and access to Pebble Beach and the grocery stores, the bait shops, it all plays in on all of that. So I would argue that if you're going to spend money on economic development, you're going to close that beach off, you're not really going in both directions.
Okay.
That's my argument on that.
We'll think, we'll consider it.
Yeah, I have plenty of comments, but I'd like to save it for an actual meeting when we're discussing it.
Okay. All right, anything else?
That's it for me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We've got ten minutes, yeah. Well, this is just a landfill capping bid and I see they're here. We can go ahead with that. It's a bid update. It's not an actual bid, so, yes. Sherwin, Candy? Oh, just Sherwin?
She's here for support.
Boy, I think you'd try and pick support a little better. Sorry, no. Go ahead, Sherwin.
Right. Uh, Chairman Commissioners, uh, thank you. I just wanted to give an update on, uh, the bidding process that we had for the project at the landfill, uh, the partial closure project. We did advertise that, uh, and we had a bid opening on the 28th of February. Unfortunately, after report that, we didn't receive any bids at that time. Um, I did have, I believe, six plan holders that were holding plans, uh, but didn't receive any bids. Um, I did follow up with some of the bidders that I knew, or plan holders that I knew. And they made two comments. One is they're, they would still be interested in the project, but they were bidding other projects at the same time. And, you know, in their world, this was a smaller project, so they concentrated their efforts on the bigger projects. So that was one comment. And then the other comment that they had is that if the completion date was pushed out a little bit more into the fall, then they would be a little more interested in, um, trying to fit that into their schedule. So that was the two follow-up comments that I received from the plan holders that I contacted.
What was the original completion date, Carmen?
The original completion date I had was, um, August 31st, uh, for a substantial completion and then October for final completion, um, which would be more or less a seeding and cleanup for final completion.
Seems fairly standard. I don't, yeah.
And that would...
It sounded like some of the contractors were waiting on, yeah, other projects that had, hadn't opened yet or...
And that was...
Bids hadn't been awarded yet, so...
And that was as per how you had put it. It wasn't that we, the commission, didn't say that it had to be by that date?
No, that's just the date that he would have put in there.
The date, and that was, you know, my judgment on the size of the project and allowing me, you know, a fairly significant amount of time to complete, uh, this amount of earthwork.
Okay.
So I guess the bottom line is the, the closure portion of the... So I guess the bottom line is the closure portion of the landfill, I mean, that does need to happen eventually. And we did, in the meantime, we did get approval from the state. So the North Dakota DEQ still wants to see the project move forward, obviously to meet regulatory requirements. Now, they don't have a hard, fast deadline in the construction season. So we do have flexibility to extend the completion date. But the bottom line is, my recommendation would be that we rebid the project, provide a little more time for the contractors to fit it into their schedule and then have some relook at it. I do know one of the contractors that was interested, I spoke to, he called me right after a different bid opening and said, well, they didn't get that bid, so now they're re-interested in this project, so they just want to rebid, so. And then one other bidder, contractor had indicated that due to their own issues, they didn't get some of their documents in time to meet the deadline, so. So we still have interests out there, I believe. So, I mean, I can only theorize that it was just a timing thing, so.
Sherwin, do you think opening it back up for another month is adequate? Because that gives us our 21 days of re.
Yes, but my, in my view, a 21-day advertising period would still be sufficient. And that would, if I look at the calendar, if we could get it into the, we could actually have it up on Quest CDM by Friday this week. We could get that in the paper, the local paper, by Wednesday next week. And then that would be 21 days following next Wednesday to do a bid opening. So I was projecting a potential bid opening on a rebid on April 1st.
April 1st, okay. I'll make a motion to, oh, go ahead.
Can I maybe add one other consideration? You know, the state and a lot of municipalities have gone to, or incorporated a electronic bid through a bidding service. We use Quest CDM. So that, there would be no additional cost to the county actually to use that. What it would is allow the bidders actually submit their bids electronically through a secure site. That may give some potential bidders another option to bid on the project. Now, that's something that we could coordinate through Quest CDM to set that up if the county would be interested to include that as an option for bidders to bid on a project.
You have that availability, you're saying?
We do. We always advertise on the service. So even this project gets advertised on that service. But there's an additional, they provide an additional service to offer out electronic bidding services as well. And I know that the state agencies are starting to use that. A lot of the municipalities are using that now. And a lot of bidders are requesting, you know, if that option is available.
Are you anticipating using the same completion dates?
Yeah, yeah. Would still be the same, potential rebid of April 1st opening. It's just another mechanism, it'd be another mechanism for.
Are you saying extend the completion date past August?
Well, I'm, I'm just wondering if he would keep it the same.
Oh, no.
I have, that's what I'm saying.
I guess I misunderstood the, I, I would look at extending the completion date of the project to later in the fall.
Okay.
I think a substantial completion date of October 15th would, you know, that April bid opening would provide plenty of time for contractors to fit it into a fall schedule and complete the work.
Okay. And that would include seeding by the 15th? Okay.
Well, that certainly would be to the commission's approval and discretion on that.
I don't have a problem with the extended date. And my only other thing would be having the potential, like, if they couldn't fit it in this year, but they bid it and it could be done next year, but whenever they started, it has to be completed in that year. You know, because we don't want them to mobilize and do something and then come back and, and have something seeding that isn't seeded, but.
I, I would agree with that additionally for the reason that all the open areas at the, what's regulatory considered an open area at the landfill has to be included in the financial assurance report. So the county has to hold financial assurance for those open areas. And once that area is closed and has the clay cap on, then it goes into post-closure assurance and it can be, the closure cost financial assurance can be reduced. So I think, you know, anticipating and expecting the project to be completed in the year certainly is beneficial to the county in terms of the financial assurance calculations that have to be documented to the state, so.
Well, there you even lost me, but I was gonna basically address the same question that Travis did. If you can't get a contractor, who will do it this year? Is there anything that prevents them from doing it next in '25?
In that regard.
And you probably said it once already.
No. You know, certainly, you know, we could look at making that change now or, you know, through a change order process, certainly, dates can be changed.
I'm just wondering, is there some, you know, healthcare, how, or state statute thing that we would have to be looking at or?
If I'm compliance, basically, yeah.
It needs to be done.
It needs to be done.
Yes, there is, there is a permit requirement that you re, you maintain your open area below a certain level.
Well, that's just.
Now, the state hasn't provided an enforcement action at this point in time.
She's been really working with us.
Well, I'm just saying, if you can't get a contractor to cap it, then what do we do?
You know, those, I don't know if I'd, I'd, a good answer right now. Certainly, if we're in that bind, you know, we have to have discussions with the state regulatory agencies, but.
Because we're doing, you know, we're doing our part. And just because we can't find a contractor, you know, why, where with the liability? I mean, we're not gonna go out there with shovels and start trying to cover it up, but, you know, it's. I, I'm, I'm gonna, at this point, I'm just gonna go with you. You'll be able to find a contractor and do it this year. And we'll cross that bridge if we can. How's that?
All right. That's all I could say too.
Okay.
I will make a motion to extend, to rebid the projec, or extend the bid to.
Maybe a rebid.
Rebid to April 1st at.
Eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock with the option of electronic bidding through, with a completion date of October 15th of 2024.
I'll second that.
Okay. It was hard.
I was gonna make a trend and say, does that sound good?
You want them to ask you to, you need their permission to rebid it?
Yes.
Correct.
But within that rebid, you have extended the dates. Do they have to put that in the motion also?
On the rebid, there'll be a revised package, bid package that'll be posted.
Okay, so what do you need in the motion?
I believe the, I believe the motion covered everything.
Motion to rebid April 1st.
April 1st.
With, with a completion date, October 15th.
Okay, just a minute. Completion date, October 15th, okay? And what else?
The option for the electronic bidding.
Done. I kind, I took it basically out of whatever stuff you took from the previous bid opening. That's where I took it from, okay.
Yeah.
Got it. And revised.
That was Jamie's motion?
Yep.
Did I ask for a second yet or did I get a second?
I called for, I gave a second.
Okay, we are in discussion right now. I didn't write that down, sorry.
We did talk about it at that meeting, that obviously if we get an early blizzard in October and seeding hasn't been done, that maybe it potentially needs to be extended, but I think we can play that.
We will cover that.
Cover that when we get there.
You have to be under contract first, so.
Right, so.
Yep. We're, we're, I, even my questions were ahead of the, this might all be done by October 15th. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean, aye? Go rebid it.
Right. We'll be making calls, make sure we get some.
Get to get insurance.
Okay.
Anything else on the landfill or?
Oh, he's walking away. There mustn't be, I don't have questions.
Candy has something more on the.
Okay, Candy.
Okay, remember this cylinder, shall I give you a word on the landfill one day?
What, what, what?
It's a cylinder that's leaking some.
Okay. Oh, yes.
I, but there came to fix something else on the loader and I asked him to look into this and see what it would cost to rebuild the thing.
She accepted.
And that is the cost to, like, they would come. I tried to get it so they would come on a Friday and collect, work on it on a Saturday and bring it back and put it back on Monday. And they can do that, but there'd be an extra $300 for the overtime they work on Saturday on that bill. But we could take it up on a Friday. They can work on it Monday, come stick it back on Tuesday if we get it scheduled somehow. And the only thing is, is it gonna be done right now, just immediately, but before it gets hot outside, because we have to have the loader when it gets hot, because we have got a, the garbage will catch on fire. You know, so we got, we have to schedule this, that we have this.
So you want us to approve this?
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Preauthorization.
I think it's quite reasonable with the work that's gonna get done, that. Yeah. Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the?
The quote?
I'll make a motion to approve the quote for this cylinder for the landfill. Oh.
Uh, 3,770 is the quote.
And that's to fix, um.
A lift hoist cylinder.
Wait a minute, do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We, uh, this is to fix a leaking cylinder.
Yeah, that lifts the bucket.
And it's, yeah, it's quite a, quite a project, so. Okay.
If your loader can't lift, it's not a loader.
Don't see what that leaking and stuff do. It can pull dirt back through the system and stop the two cylinders taking, in order all along, right? And it's all original parts.
So Candy, if I put landfill loader, to fix the landfill loader, would that be all right in that motion?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. 3,376.
And it's too big of a cylinder for us to take off.
3,770. Yep.
Yeah, 3,770. They're gonna come and take it off?
Yes, they are. We ain't got nothing to do with it.
They'll come, okay. I think that's real reasonable. You sure they understand they're coming to take it off and repair it? Okay, all right. All right. Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve repair of the landfill loader, cylinder. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean, aye? It's your loader fixed.
Yes, we need it.
Anything else, Candy? Anything else?
I don't really think so at this time.
Okay.
Thanks for doing my update.
Wanda.
This one, yeah, Wanda's in here. We could probably.
Are you all here, Wanda? Oh, okay, then we'll wait.
Do you want to call Dawn?
Or, I was gonna say, can we do the asphalt thing or the?
Dawn is Dawn.
Is it asphalt?
It's another Dawn.
Oh, different Dawn, okay.
Yeah, different Dawn, Dawn Wolf from the state. He was gonna be here.
He was, but he isn't coming because he has some trees to deal with.
Okay, so he's not gonna be here. So it's just you two. Okay, go ahead, then we will address it. Clerk of Court by NMC contract renewal. You can come forward. Have a chair. We're getting you right up front.
Up front.
Get you in front of the attorney. And once again, state your name, please. We know Wanda.
My name is Donna Wonderlick. I'm the court administrator for the district.
Okay.
And so I've got information from the state court administrator's office as well.
Okay, this is the time that we need to discuss what we want to do for the.
Yep.
Clerk's office. Actually, you have three options. There's one option is to elect to have clerk of court and court staff designated by the Supreme Court become employees of the state judicial system. This means that the salaries, the phone bill, computers, office supplies will be provided by the state. No rent will be collected for the clerk's office or the courtroom as the statute states that each county shall provide space for the clerk's office and the courtroom. The fees that the county now collects would go to the state. The office hours would be changed from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And the state would provide right now for 1.25 FTEs. This means that there might not be two full-time employees in the clerk's office. Also, the marriage licenses would no longer be issued from the clerk's office nor would there be passport application accepted in the clerk's office. So there would be loss of services there, I feel. Option number two, may elect to enter into funding agreement for the 2025 through 2027 biennium to receive reimbursement for providing clerk services. And currently, we receive $12,250.50 per month from the state or $146,406 per year. And this is the option that the commissioners have chosen over the past years. And in my opinion, I would like to see this continued. And option number three, provide clerk of district court services at the county's own expense. This means that the, that Mr. County would pay for all services without any reimbursement from the state. So there are your options.
Well, I don't like three.
Three is not good.
Three, three's not a good option. And your recommendation is two?
That's what I would like to do right now.
Yeah, I don't really like one either, but.
And I lean.
Like, it sounds great, but then at the same time, if we're losing services and potentially losing staff, I don't know, it seems.
I know I, and I have expressed to both Donna and Wanda that I would be, I'm inclined to go with option one from a financial perspective. So I would just like to know what the negative impact to our county would be other than marriage licenses wouldn't be done here or would they be taken care of?
Most of the counties, that's taken care of in the recorder's office, not in the clerk's office. Because of the non-judicial function.
Okay.
And other counties that are a combined office of clerk of court and a register of deeds for the recorders, they, the reporters in that office do the marriage licenses. And some of them do the passport applications also. And some of them do the passport applications also.
And so if you were to go with state funding, it would not be allowed if the clerks continue to do those, that would need to transfer to another county office. And so, um, but as far as losing services, I wanted to say that statewide, there are a few counties that are small, that have provided, um, that have opted to go with state funding. And they have two FTEs in their office. Mercer County would be the first county that was below a one point five FTE lead, that under the way the current process was, would only get to have one FTE come over to be state funded. That said, when I was visiting with Don Wolf, our finance director, and Sally Holaba, our state court administrator, about that, they acknowledged that you can't run an office with fewer than two people. And so their intent would be that if you opted with option one, that they would go to the legislature to request an additional FTE to cover the additional point two five that wouldn't allow for them the way the current process works. And so, um.
And I know I was a little crass when I re- reply to that, but if, as I had mentioned before, if we were to choose option one, it is not our obligation to make sure those duties get performed. Now the state has to make sure they get performed. So it's, i- if, if you need more people to get it done, then you, then you need to find those people, not us.
And we have ways to, to accommodate that.
And I just wanna put that out there, it's not that it would be our obligation that the clerk of court in Mercer County would be short-staffed, it would be, the state would have to make sure that gets taken care of.
And if we would.
Yep. Anyway, we have to make this decision by April first, and it would be for two years, right? It's every, every.
Yeah, we're going to affect next year, yeah.
And, um.
Starts in July of twenty-five.
Okay, I was gonna mention that. It would be July first, so.
Say there's a change in our clerk of courts office, say Wanda decides she's retiring on April second, we can't change our option, we're stuck with what we picked?
Yes.
See, that, that, there's, I can't, I can't go down.
I want you to stay forever, Wanda, but.
We all like to live there.
I'm just saying.
I, I just feel now would be, I think I can say it this way, I gotta keep my attorney staring at me back there. I think I could say that I feel that now would be a good time to transition to option one. Rather than two years from now. And/or if, I, I know there was rumor that it may have been legislated that the state was gonna take over, or all the clerk of court duties in all the counties in the state. And that may happen again, so I feel the transition would be smoother now than down the road. That, that's just my.
Todd, do you have any thoughts on this? I don't know if I can ask Todd for thoughts on this, but.
Well, I appreciate and understand Donna's job, I've often described it as juggling explosive hand in your nose while being closed down with a fire hose at the same time. Um, she's done a fantastic job. However, what we have now really isn't broke. I mean, and then if that all moves to the state, it can make things a little more difficult. Because right now, I'll give you an example, this morning, we got somebody that needs to get on for a bond hearing. Was able to be taken care of pretty quick and easy, and one thirty, that bond hearing's happening. With the local control, you've got a lot more flexibility. So, whatever the commission size, obviously I'll live with. But, I do have the concern with the centralizing everything, doesn't always work out as well as it should. And, yeah, there was talk in the legislature, uh, just having all taken over as state. This last session wasn't the first time, I think this might be the third time that came up to the legislature. First time, it died in committee, the second time it came out of committee and failed, and the third time it failed on the floor again.
So now, right now, Wanda, if say we, you know, your hours are eight to four, but say we have a case after four, you guys just stay?
Yes, if we have a jury trial and it goes past four.
Something that, okay, so it's not like it's all abandoned, it's worked out within the office to stay.
And we would have to work the state's hours, and that would be eight to five.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if we'd be closed over the noon hour, or if we would rotate. I'm not sure what the smaller counties do, I know in the larger counties, they leave it quick when you open up in the lunch hour, and we stay really lunch hours.
Right, that's part of my, um, and I don't know, it's thought, I'll put it, put it out that way, you know, concern is thought that right now, there are larger counties. Why are the larger counties state-funded? Why don't we do the small counties, and you know, the, instead, because then it would be less of a tax burden on those small counties, 'cause I'm paying taxes to the state of North Dakota to support the clerk of court office, and I'm not gonna name counties, 'cause I could get it wrong, but in larger counties, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm paying for those clerks, and I'm paying for the clerk in my own small county. Well, financially, it should've been looked at, all the small counties should've been taken over to take that tax burden off the small county taxpayers. And the larger counties, you know, your, your, uh, your budget in those larger counties are, you can put at least a zero behind what our budget is in those counties, so. That's just one of my own little personal thoughts on this. I know Kathy and Wanda do a fantastic job. I just look at, I think it would be a good time to transition. It wouldn't take effect until July first of twenty-five, so that's effectively a little over a year from now. So, and then if we do, if things change, that's not until twenty eight, I can't, so. But anyway, I'm, that's just my thought. I'm just one, um, if the, the commission here today wants to have more commissioners here, I'm good with that, we, we do have one more meeting that we have to decide.
I do kinda like the idea, not that I, I hate pushing stuff down the road, but I, I kinda would like to see what Rick and Liza have to say about it also.
Pardon?
I'd like to see kinda what Rick and Liza have to say about it also, but.
I know, I hate kicking cans down the road, we end up just having all kinds of stuff on the agenda, and just keeps piling up, so.
There's pros and cons to each one.
Each, right, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Service will remain the same. The clerk will continue to work with the sheriff, the clerk will continue to work with the state's attorney. And, and so much of it will not feel different, but I just wanted to make sure that you understood that there will be no change in local service.
Well, with that said, let me ask this question if I can, so what, um, how, what is the process we, in the transition? So do the two, we have two people working in our clerk of court office, so do those two individuals have to fill on an application with the state? Okay. So do, does one, does, I don't know if I can use it proper English here, but.
What would happen if the legislature doesn't approve, to keep that two?
That, that's my biggest concern, because I know Donna will fight to keep two here, but there's other people making decisions that Donna has to play with. And putting this, putting the clerk of court's office to one person. That, that concerns me a great deal.
That would not be the intention.
Right, uh, not that the, no, but it, it is a decision that's ultimately up to somebody else to grant that two-person office.
What if in two years, there are two different clerks working in there, and this transition is gonna take place?
I also thought about that.
Well, we could set all the, and hypothesize and nothing comes true, but.
It's not a bad idea to get the rest, the other two commissioners, discuss it, think it over, and then on the twenty-first.
I mean, one way or another, we have to make a decision on the twenty-first, so.
It can't go any further than that. That's what I would.
Okay, what is, what are your wishes? I'll leave it up to you two.
I would wish to move it to the twenty-first to get Rick and Liza's opinions on it also, have a full board.
Yeah.
Hopefully, hopefully a full board.
Okay, we will postpone our, put, we will postpone our, um, decision on our, um, clerk of court option until the twenty-first.
Okay, so.
Do we need a time, or can we just do it as other business?
Cause I'm sure these guys got enough time. How much time you gonna give to that Carrington land thing? Half hour?
Half hour should do it.
Okay, so then we could put this on at ten thirty.
Sure.
I can tell you from personal experience, anytime I've had a question with Donna about something with the courts, she, she's either there or gets right back to me, so, any individual commissioners have questions, I know Donna will field those questions. Wanda's just down the hall, you can find her every day, every day. For how many years now? I wanna ask that. No, I have a second, I just realized I stuck my boot in my mouth, so.
Where's our attorney?
I love getting that bit alive.
That's the attorney, so he, he fend for himself.
We know each other from riding the school bus together.
He was a little brat Ben.
There you go, back at him. Okay, thank you. Highway department asphalt thing, do we, do we have someone showing up for that?
I don't think so. What we have is a document. Did Rick talk to you, Jean?
No.
He's the purchase of that asphalt. Because it is.
Our tank is empty and.
It's a hundred dollars more because it cures faster, here's a problem, I don't believe I put it through here.
I don't think it's in there.
So was that the?
Don't know if Rick talked to me.
What they're requesting is to approve thirty-two tons, MC three thousand cutback asphalt cement at nine hundred and fifty dollars a ton.
How much was it? Oh, okay.
Thirty-two tons, MC three thousand cutback asphalt cement at nine hundred and fifty dollars a ton.
Five zero, yep.
Yeah, I thought you said nine fifteen.
You got a total?
And I do, well, I think some, oh, Rick had said something about, we had only approved like eight hundred, twenty-five thousand, and this is gonna come up to like thirty-two, something to that effect.
This comes out to thirty thousand, four hundred, if I get my math correct.
It was the amount that we had given him.
Yep.
Yeah.
I wish I had a little more information on it.
It sounds like this product's a little more, uh, easy to work with.
It, it's what the state uses?
Yeah, it's, um, how did Rick explain it?
Cause I know Rachel's trying to explain to me, I think it, it cures faster so that it dries up faster, and it's just more effective.
Now I'll ask the real, um, dumb question, what is this used for?
Track ceiling.
That's what I thought. So this is supposed to make it so you don't track it down the highway quite as far?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and it's what the state uses, so.
Okay.
I mean, it's not like we're.
It's not a new, we're not reinventing the wheel, it's just.
All right.
We're not the guinea pig.
But we have, we currently use a different product.
Yeah.
So does it not need anything, because the initial plan had been to use the product you've been using, and now you're looking at this full term?
And the dollar amount was different.
Right.
Yeah, the original, the other stuff would've been on just a little less. Okay.
I'll move to approve the updated contract for the MC three thousand asphalt cement.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I don't like Tara on my vehicles, so.
Exactly.
Oh, speaking of that, maybe Charlie knows more. Needed, oh, just in time. Come on.
We were just talking about the asphalt cement.
MC three thousand.
MC three thousand.
We currently have a different, not MC three thousand. Eight hundred, okay, there was a different number, I didn't.
Well, and I don't know if they, they, they're either out of that, or a little on it or something, so.
That's what Rick also said, like the tank is empty or almost empty, or something to that effect.
And I, I know, uh. Yeah, I know Ken brought it up to me. He, he just asked my opinion on it, and I said, well, I know it sets up quicker, it's a little more expensive, but it's, it's a better material.
User-friendly.
User-friendly, better materials should perform, technically perform better with the literature release, but, um, I think it's like a hundred bucks more a ton, and maybe like thirty, thirty-five ton or thirty-two ton or something, so.
Yeah, the quote's thirty-two, so.
Okay, so, yeah.
Okay, so we're looking at a difference of about thirty-two hundred dollars, all right.
Yeah, not a lot.
Not a lot. All right, we got a motion on the floor to approve that, um, any more discussion? Hearing nun, Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye. We're done with that already.
Any, any other updates?
Obviously, I was just gonna give an update, um. We, right now, uh, the Mercer twenty box, just a quick update on that, we're waiting for, on the contractor to reach out for when they're gonna set up the reconstruction meeting. Haven't heard from him yet, I've been kinda poking the stick, so to speak. Um, CSI's the contractor, if you recall, they ordered the box, we approved the box submittals last fall, they ordered it then, so I would anticipate it being available, you know, probably within the mid, midsummer, if I had to guess, at the, the latest? Just making some assumptions, I don't know.
Gonna have it done by harvest time?
Yeah, they, well, I forget, I'll probably get the contract.
You're funny.
The contract deadline.
I'm gonna poke a stick at you.
But they, they should have plenty of time, they should have plenty of time if they're, obviously their, their, their seasonal schedule with the, their projects allows, so. So more to come on that, once we hear more from the contractor, we'll just keep bugging them, uh, to set up a meeting and try to get the wheel rolling there, and then, um, chip seals in town, uh, or in county, sorry, I know Ken wanted me to make sure that I got the, um, or brought that up for approval to try to bid something out on that. I think we're shooting for April. Currently have a budget in place for chip sealing on twenty-six, seven, twenty-seven south and Houston Bay Road, and then we're gonna list twenty-seven north as an alternate that was just paved last year. It's a pretty big road, so we might not be able to afford to do it, but we'll at least list it as an alternate, so we can mull it over, if we wanna do it or not. If it makes sense in the budget or not. So we were, we're gonna try to bid those out, so we can help them have bid letting in April, and then of course, the Mercer Airport Road, first fifty, first avenue, southwest. The paving of that road, too, try to bid that for April.
You still have to do one.
What's that?
She did, he did that one time, did he?
The airport road, are you, uh, is that going to be, um, bid from the county two hundred to the airport entrance, or the whole mile? Or the whole mile?
So we have, the way we're setting it up is that we're gonna provide alternates on that one as well.
Okay.
Um, we, I did do some, uh, benefit cost analysis, like checking what our best options are. We had so boring, uh, geotechnical report performed out there to see what the existing road then looked like, how they'll perform with just a five-inch asphalt mat over the top of it. Came back very favorable, and that's easily our most cost-effective approach to this. So that's actually, like, by far, so that's the direction we're, we're suggesting to go. The base bid is based, is gonna be to pave from two hundred, about point six miles past the airport entrance by about fifty feet.
Okay.
And then the red, remainder of the roadway would be reshaped and rolled in, uh, new class five, put down if need be, and just improvements to the roadway. That's the base bid. The alternate would be to note, to pave the whole mile, and just to see what that added cost would be, so we could consider that if we wanted to do that.
Okay.
The, um, the other option that needed to be brought up in front of you guys today, I've had conversations with the Mercer County Regional Airport Engineer, who I guess, behind the curtains, obviously has been visiting with the Regional Airport Authority. They asked if we would, um, you know, be so inclined to include an alternate, and then additional alternate in this project for a pay, for an overlay on their access road and their parking lot on the land side of the airport, which then they would pay the county, you know, obviously for that work performed, in the scope of that. I didn't see an issue with that, assuming you guys are okay with it. It's very simple to include in the bid package, and, uh, they can, they can choose whether they wanna take on that add, that cost or not. The county would be paid for it. They would reimburse you, I suppose. You'd pay for it, and then they pay you right back, so it'll probably work out.
What does it cost alone to do all these, like, bid packages and everything? If it's something we're not going to do at all, is this...
An added cost, you're saying?
Yeah.
Above and beyond, that's pretty normal, 'cause we're already in the, in the weeds with it. I would, I would, I would argue it's, not very, not very much. We're talking maybe two extra sheets in our plans, that probably, with, you know, realistically.
But it, like, the whole pro, like, paving it period from, at all, this whole project at all? Is it, I mean, our bid? I mean, if it's not...
Your kind of estimated cost for the construction of it, or...
The consultant part of it, I guess, if we're not, if it's not a project we're going to do, are we wasting money having this even looked at? Or since it's on the project list?
Yeah, I don't, I, it's not, certainly not costing you more than what's already budgeted.
Okay.
And I don't see, yeah, I don't, because we set up a long subcontract on the design fee side, so, you know, we're, we're essentially absorbing that in our scope for it without changing the contract, it's...
So to answer your question, there's no additional costs?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much.
I'm gonna have a shirt, okay.
And that's all that I've handled. We're go, on the chip ceiling, but also gonna include striping in that, 'cause that's, uh, chip sealing, striping, so it would include both of those improvements around the county.
Do you need us to approve any bid opening, or is this done through, well, most of it'd be through the state, wouldn't it?
These, these jobs, no.
Okay.
Um, but since you speak of the state, we are waiting, we haven't yet to hear back on flex funding. Um, we did put in for the Airport Road for that, for the, for the construction element.
I was gonna say, I thought we were talking about something.
Yeah, and, and we should, we're supposed to hear in the month of March, to hear back on that this month yet.
So why...
I attended the DOT conference, Association of County Engineers Conference, that, uh, January, I believe it was. They said that February twelfth, they would have their, their recommendations to the director on NACI, and then they would basically take those recommendations from local government agency and compile us. There are two hundred and eighty-somewhat applications for forty-somewhat million dollars of, of monies available. So it's, it's a fight over the money. We'll see if we get anything out of it or not, but you never know, we might...
So why, is it because of the amount of stretch of these roadways as to why we're bidding it out to chip seal versus our own people doing it? Is there, is there reasons that we're, 'cause I know they're out, crews have been out doing chip sealing on other roads, so...
Well, to my knowledge, I think the county have capabilities of performing self-forming chip seals.
Oh, chip seal.
Chip seal, you're thinking crack seal.
Crack seal, I'm on crack seal.
Crack seal, yeah, absolutely.
Chip seal, yep.
Yep.
That explains, like, they've been doing this, crack versus chip, gotcha.
Just a little different.
A little different.
You're doing a good question, but yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, you know, should be there.
No, we don't have, yeah, I don't. Let's not go there.
They just...
We could find some oil.
Let, let that oil soak in it.
That's all I have.
I don't have any more questions for you. I might have, but I can't think of any right now.
Jean's having a day.
Yeah. I got two people on my right keeping me in order here. All right, anything else, Charlie? Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you. Now, like, if I'm cor, uh, correct on this, we're down to portfolio updates?
That's all I see left.
Okay, I'll do mine first, because they're brief. We had, uh, the HR for moving to the, um, Veteran Affairs Office, Veterans Affair, he moved to another office. He voluntarily moved, and I don't mean that sarcastically, I am saying that honestly. I asked him if he would have a problem relocating, and he said nope. And he volunteered where he's currently located. So then the HR moved into that office. HR's not under my portfolio. Uh, of course, we heard from Wanda, so that's the clerk of court update. My state's attorney, as far as, he had nothing for me, knew, so... The, uh, weed board, I, there was no meeting that I know of. And, uh, and I did not talk to him about the, uh, expense voucher, which I will do that.
Actually, Gwen did talk to him. He doesn't have an issue with that.
Okay.
No, I think Gwen just said she was gonna get it to him or whatever, so hopefully that's...
And that's all I have, unless you guys, think of something to ask me that I forgot.
I don't think so.
Okay, that's it for me. Travis?
We kinda saw the planning and zoning stuff was up today, and then, um, I don't believe we're having one in March. I don't think there was anything submitted, um, to be on the March one, so we probably won't have one in March. And then, um, uh, library board met last week. We were under budget, um, for the end of the year, so everything's looking good for the library. Then as far as, um, Meg Ed, Beaver was here, they're gonna give you an update on that. And then Lewis and Clark, um, that doesn't really happen until June. And I'm trying to think if there's anything else going on right now, so it's kind of, kinda off-season for a lot of my portfolios, so that's all I got.
Jamie?
Same, uh, Candy was here, nothing much from maintenance, and I'm in the middle of meetings for the other boards, so I don't think I have anything else.
All right, that's, I think we got everything covered on the agenda, correct? So, meeting adjourned.